Call the October 24, 2019, meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Will you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Absent is Rich, seated for Rich is Susan, and Kim is absent. Next, approval of the minutes from the 2019 meeting, or the October 10, 2019, meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
No, sir.
No.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the October 10 meeting minutes.
Second?
It's been moved by John, seconded by Ruth, that we approve the minutes from October 10, 2019. Okay, it passed. Should've asked this earlier. Bryce, are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir, there are not.
Okay. Next item, number six, is a public meeting on ordinance number 3.3262 to amend several sections of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the Town of Parker Development Design Standards. We will open the public meeting at 7:02. Carolyn?
No, we have black screens.
There it is.
Here we go.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Okay, so good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight I'll be presenting an overview of the ordinance 3.326.2 to approve the new development design standards. Ordinance 3.326.2 for the new development design standards replaces the current commercial, industrial, and multifamily design standards, also known as the CIMF. The ordinance also amends four sections of the Land Development Code to reference the new development design standards. Due to the increasing concern about architectural and urban design quality of new development in town, an update to the CIMF was needed. To address these concerns, Town Council directed staff to prepare a major update of the standards. Following Town Council direction in 2017, staff contracted with Urban Design Consultant for a major update of the CIMF. The project was phased into two components. Phase one was the update of the multifamily design standards, which were completed and adopted in 2018. Phase two was the update of the commercial, industrial, and mixed-use design standards, which are now complete. The updated design standards were combined into one document, which are now known as the Development Design Standards. A number of public engagement activities were held during the planning process that included three design workshops with the community, two visual preference surveys, a bus tour for site, development sites. We held ongoing public meetings with various technical committees, and then we also made a public presentation to AIA Colorado. We also held various study sessions with Planning Commission and Town Council during key milestones of the project. The Development Design Standards features three chapters and will apply to most development in town, except for single-family detached homes, which are governed by the LDO. The Development Design Standards incorporates the values of Parker 2035 Master Plan, and recently, the recently adopted multifamily design standards will still remain in place. Chapter one, Commercial, Industrial, and Mixed-Use Design Standards, features graphics, photos, and preferred site layouts. The chapter also has new definitions, building orientation standards, building typologies, and standards for renovations of existing buildings. The new standards for building orientation emphasize the activation of street rentages for a building's front, side, and rear. The standards for commercial development blocks will also require large parcels to be broken down into small walkable blocks with internal streets and sidewalks. The new building composition standards will require articulation of the building's front, side, and rear. A building's massing will be broken down through the design of clear top, middle, and base, and will also use varied roof forms, as well as changes in wall planes. The standards will also require enhanced design for building corners, and primary entrances will have storefronts, which will include either an awning or a canopy, and will also include large windows on the ground floor levels of buildings. The adopted multifamily design standards have not been changed and will remain the same in this document. The standards feature site design, building composition, orientation, and block layout for various multifamily building types. Chapter three covers design standards for publicly accessible space that address the soft and hardscape elements of exterior spaces of commercial, industrial, and multifamily developments. These standards feature requirements for the design of public spaces, public art, sightlighting, and landscape design. Staff believes that the implementation of the Development Design Standards will result in higher-quality building design, improved site plan layout, and enhance the public realm. It'll also contribute to Parker's hometown feel. Staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Development Design Standards and Ordinance 3.326.2. Are there any questions?
Questions for Carolyn?
No, sir.
No.
Okay, as part of the public meeting process, we always allow time for public comment. This is a time when any member of the public can comment on this item before us. If you have a comment, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no public, we will close the public comment. Any further questions for Carolyn?
No.
No.
All right, we will close the public meeting at 7:09. Commissioner discussion.
I was fortunate, Carolyn, to be involved in some of those early meetings, and I know how much work went into this, to come up with this entire program. A lot of give and take from the community, and from the staff, and from our consultants. It was a great product to be involved in, and I'm very much in favor of this. I think it really is an asset to the town.
I read the document this afternoon, and I was impressed with the use of charts and the clarity with which the standards have been made known, the standards versus the guidelines, and the use of the charts and when what applies, and the use of the illustrations was, I thought, a great improvement over the small, close text that many planning documents have had in the past. So congratulations on a well-produced document.
Congratulations.
I agree with Roseanne. It was very straightforward, it was very easy to read, and very easy to understand. So I thought it was a great addition to the community.
Yeah, I'd like to echo some of the comments made about the efforts that have gone into this, having been around while this was being looked at, and the interaction we've had as a Planning Commission, I think the interaction the community's had, and the thoughtfulness that's gone into what we want Parker to look like in all aspects, residential and commercial in the future. I think we've come up with a document, or you've come up with a document, that expresses the thoughts of the community and really takes a step up in our design standards from what we've had in the past. So thank you.
Yeah, and I don't have a lot more to add, but I'm really pleased with the outcome, and this is really, really good work. So happy for it, thank you.
I would certainly agree. Kudos go to staff and Planning Commissioners that have been around, through all of the permutations of this, and for the work that went into it. So do we have a motion?
I move Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Development Design Standards and Ordinance 3.326.2.
I'll second it. It's been moved by John, seconded by Eliana. The Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Development Design Standards and Ordinance 3.326.2.
Mr. Chair, last senior, we have to do a voice vote.
We'll have to do a voice vote. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eliana moved it.
John moved. John moved, Eliana seconded.
And it passed unanimously.
Unanimously. That's okay.
He's got the big book.
He's got Jim's book. He's playing Jim again tonight.
Yeah, that's all right. Next, item 6B, a public meeting on ordinance number 3.01.120 to amend Title 13 of the Parker Municipal Code regarding hemp operations in the light industrial zone districts. We will open the public meeting at 7:12.
Bryce? Thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, as noted before you tonight, is an ordinance regarding hemp in the light industrial district. On May 20, 2019, the town approved an emergency ordinance establishing 180-day suspension for approving new hemp processing and storage uses within the town to regulate hemp processing. Hemp is a cannabis cousin to marijuana with THC levels of less than .3/10 of a percent, and hemp is regulated by the state, and staff reached out as part of this process to several jurisdictions to understand how they address hemp processing. The processing and storage of raw hemp has significant smells and uses a number of flammable materials in terms, to break down the raw material into oils. Secondary processing of hemp, using those oils and putting them into things like lotions and honey and those types of things, is not significantly different in terms of smell and safety than most light industrial uses found within the Town of Parker. The town's Light Industrial Zone District currently allows for what we call sensitive receptors, such as daycares, schools, gyms, and other gathering spaces. Light industrial uses that create significant smells, use large amounts of flammable materials, are not appropriate near these sensitive receptors. So the purpose of this ordinance is to create definitions for hemp processing, to not allow the initial processing of raw industrial hemp in any zone district in the town, to limited industrial hemp processing in light industrial zone districts, so that's kind of the second set of processing, to not allow the storage of raw hemp in any zone district within the town, to not allow the growing of hemp in the light industrial district, and to address potential nuisance impacts associated with hemp processing. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve an ordinance amending the land development ordinance regarding hemp in the light industrial zone district. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Bryce?
I have one. I was wondering what the thinking was between going as a use by right versus a use by special review?
So we contemplated both approaches. In the conversation we had with other jurisdictions and with hemp processors, it seemed there was a clear break between the heavier processing of the raw hemp and then the kind of things where you're putting it into products. And so rather than doing use by special review, it seemed more clear to say, hey, these heavier impact general industrial uses just should not be permitted in town. We don't have a zone district for it, and these other uses are very similar to any other type of light industrial use we do in town.
Okay.
Other question?
Bryce, this will include all of Parker?
Yes, so this is specific to light industrial district, except for where it's not permitted.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, again, as part of the public meeting process, we allow for public comment on this item. If you have a comment on this item, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Any other questions for Bryce?
No.
We will close the public meeting at 7:16. Commissioner discussion.
Pretty clear.
Yeah, administrative.
I was pleased to see that you took a close look at using heavy use versus the light industrial, and the exclusions that you've made regarding, and nuisance impacts, I think are important, because whenever you're working with biologicals, you can always have odors and smells and runoff and things like that, and I think the ordinance addresses that very well.
I agree with Ruth Ann on that, and I was also quite concerned with the smells and odors that could have an impact on anybody surrounding the operation, and I think this is the type thing that is going to keep us a clean and easy town, and it won't have any slippery slopes in it either.
I guess I would concur with the comments made so far, that it seems like this clarifies what can and can't be done, and there won't be future issues, but it is a part of the economy and a part of the state agriculture. It's certainly being grown, so there will be people who will make those products, and this seems to fit right in. So do we have a motion?
I move Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend Title 13 of the Parker Municipal Code regarding hemp operations in the light industrial district.
Second?
It's been moved by Eliana, seconded by Eric, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend Title 13 of the Parker Municipal Code regarding hemp operations in the light industrial district. Now it's working again, so signify your vote. There we go. Passes 7-0. Next, item number 6C, a public meeting on ordinance number 3.01.121 to amend subsections, several subsections of the Parker Municipal Code concerning commercial wireless facilities. We will open the public meeting at 7:19. Bryce, you're on again.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, as noted by the Chair before you tonight in his ordinance to amend the Wireless Communication Facilities section of the Land Development Ordinance. In 2017, the town collaborated with Verizon to make significant changes to Section 13.12 of the Parker Municipal Code to address changes in state statutes, and part of that was to allow for the installation of small cells in the town's public right-ofways. Over the past few months, the town has started processing applications for the installation of small cells, and has discovered some gaps in the original code. The purpose of the amendments tonight are to set consistent height standards for small-cell facilities that are located in the right-ofway, and having different heights for local roads versus collector and arterial roads. Also, the purpose is to clarify additional submittal requirements, as determined by the town, for small-cell facilities, increase the fees to cover professional services that we need to support us, and to clarify height requirements for roof-mounted wireless communication facilities. Small-cell height, the current code allows heights in the right-ofway up to the maximum height permitted in the zoning. Federal law allows for heights of up to 50 feet for small cells. In order to consolidate and create consistency within our right-ofways, rather than referencing the zoning for height requirements, there'll be specific height requirements based on the roadway type. For local roads, the maximum height will be 35 feet and 40 feet with Planning Director approval. For collector and arterials, it'll be 40 foot and 45 feet with Planning Director approval. Part of the reason we chose to allow for a higher height on collector and arterial roads is to encourage the providers to locate on the collector and arterial roads and farther away from residents. Also, we wanted to clarify some additional submittal items. Right now, we already require these, but it was helpful to put it in the code. It says the town may request the following as part of a permit application, traffic control plan when they're installing it, certificate of insurance, equipment declarations, and then the site supplement agreement, which is part of the separate agreement we have with each provider to build within our right-ofway. Increased application fees, it's exactly what it sounds like. It's an increase in the application fees for permits to help us cover some of the costs of hiring professionals to review some of these sites where there may be questions that come up. We don't have a cellular specialist on staff. Roof-mounted facility heights, so these are not small cells, but included in this proposed change. The current code allows for heights up to 12 feet above the building, but it does not create clarity regarding compliance with zoning. So the question is, is it 12 feet meeting the zoning requirement, or is it 12 feet above the zoning? The proposed change allows for building-mounted facilities to be allowed to go five feet above the maximum height in the zone district, still 12 feet above the top of the building, when it is integrated into the architecture. The reason that we would allow an additional five feet is because we would rather see these facilities end up co-located on existing structures than separately on towers adjacent to it. So it's something that encourages them to locate on existing buildings. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve an ordinance amending the land development ordinance regarding wireless communication facilities. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Bryce?
Bryce, I don't think, in my mind, it hasn't been covered. How close together can these be built? If there were multiple providers who wanted to build their own towers, there's no stipulation that they could build or put towers 10 feet apart.
So the current code requires a 600-foot spacing unless they're co-located. So if they're co-locating on an existing light footpost, or they're co-locating with each other, the 600 feet doesn't apply, but they can't do, to your point, three or four towers in a cluster right in one location.
Questions?
Just to clarify, when they put something on top of the building, that five feet, does that extend, like say if you have a building that tops out at 35 feet, but then you've got setback, 10-feet-high refrigeration unit or something like that, you know, equipment on the top of the building, it doesn't extend past that five feet? It's five feet from the top of the building itself, is that correct?
So let me try and answer that a different way, and you can tell me if I hit the mark. So what the proposed code says is it leaves the requirement that these facilities can be 12-foot above the height of the roof. That 12-foot above the height of the roof does not include HVAC systems and those types of things. But it also has a maximum cap of five feet higher than what's permitted in the zone district. So right now, in theory, you could go 12-foot above what's hired, allowed in the zone district. This clarifies that you have to meet the zoning requirement. However, Planning Director may allow for an additional five feet, subject to some design standards.
As an example, if we have a building that's in a 35-foot zoned area for height, and we have a building that's only 20 feet tall, but because of where it's located, that's what they like to put it, they could put a 20-foot piece above that roof line?
No.
Because that would be the 12 plus the 5?
No.
15 plus?
So if there's a 20-foot-tall building, the maximum they can go is 32-foot tall.
12 feet.
12 feet.
Oh, 12 feet above?
Above the building.
Okay.
However, if you had a 30-foot-tall building, and the maximum height in that zone district is 35 feet?
Right.
You could go up to 40. So you can't take advantage of the full 12 feet, because you have that cap of five, subject to Planning Director approval.
Okay.
Other questions?
No.
All right, again, if anyone wishing to comment on this particular matter before us tonight, step over to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, any further questions for Bryce?
No.
All right, then we will close the public meeting at 7:26. Commissioner discussion.
This is pretty cut and dry from my perspective.
Administrative cleanup?
Given that we're required to permit these things, I think it's good that we have the extensive rules and regulations regarding how we're going to allow them to install these in our community, and everybody likes using their cell phone, so I guess it's important we have them.
I agree with them, and I think this is also coming into the 5G situation that will eventually come about, which will allow Town of Parker to remain competitive in the electronic wireless field.
Hopefully.
I would agree. I think it provides clarity, and again, will move us into this era, but do it in a fashion that's controlled and orderly. So do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend Section 13.12 of the Parker Municipal Code regarding commercial wireless communication facilities.
Second.
It's been moved by Ruth Ann, seconded by John. The Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend Section 13.12 of the Parker Municipal Code regarding commercial wireless communication facilities. And that passes 7-0. Any additional staff items, Jason, Bryce?
Just a reminder that next meeting, they'll be training at 5:30 before the meeting. Just a reminder that next meeting, they'll be training at 5:30 before the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Then we, what?
I just want to remember to invite the planning commission to participate in the presentation of the final draft of Parker World Order Plan.
Yes.
And that will count as on Wednesday, November 13, between 5:00 and 7:00.
Okay.
I just want to mention that I, last, a couple of weekends ago, I went to the Harvey Open Space that we're going to be in development for, to take a tour that was done by the Douglas Land Conservancy Program. I'd like to encourage my fellow commissioners and any members of the public to take advantage of that. It was a really nice way to spend a morning, and it was interesting to see how the paths would be worked out and to learn in detail, and actually be able to be on the land and see what it looked like.
Yeah, thank you. All right, then we will adjourn at 7:29. Thank you. Bryce?